What's that? All right, folks, we're going to go ahead and get reconvened here. Mr. Tobias? No, you're fine. All right, so I have some comments with respect to some of the comments that were made, but I'm going to hold them, and I just, I think in the interest of time, we have too many people here. I do think a lot of inaccuracy was contained, but I don't know that it's necessary to get into that at this point. With respect to your question, Commissioner Kabaya, or your request to articulate what it is that I'm proposing, essentially, I'm not looking to do this in a criminal fashion where someone would be subject to 60 days in jail. I think that that's perhaps a bit heavy-handed and unnecessary. What I'd like to see is an ordinance as opposed to an emergency order where the first offense would be just a written warning, and then the second and subsequent offense would be some type of a civil citation. I don't think we need much in the way of a fine. I think, you know, even a $50 fine would be significant enough to disincentivize people from violating it. So first offense, written warning, because we need some way of actually tracking that there was a first offense, followed by the second and subsequent receiving some fine. I don't necessarily have a huge stake in 50 bucks. If you want to make it 40 or 100, you know, I'm flexible. As to the specifics of what would or wouldn't be included, generally speaking, masks would have to be worn inside businesses. The exceptions would be if you're eating, drinking, or exercising, if you're in a place of worship, although I think it's a great idea to wear a mask. I would leave it up to those individual places of worship to determine their own policy. I know they've been exempted from some other things at the statewide level. It wouldn't apply to anyone with a diagnosed health condition that's incompatible with wearing masks. It wouldn't apply to firefighters or EMTs to the extent that it would be incompatible or that it would interfere with their duties. It also wouldn't apply to anyone, obviously, undergoing a medical, a facial medical, or dental procedure. It wouldn't apply anywhere outdoors, so it would only be indoor businesses. It would exclude children under the age of six, and I'm flexible on the other end of the scale. I think over age 75, we may want to exclude as well, but again, I'm flexible with respect to where we draw that line. And we would, again, this isn't a specific limitation, but the idea would be that we would ask code enforcement to assist with enforcing in any municipalities or areas where local law enforcement requests that assistance. So if there is a city or even a section within unincorporated Brevard where there's a shortage of officers, or there's concern expressed, I would ask code enforcement to help out in those limited circumstances with respect to enforcement. And I would contemplate all of the municipalities being included unless they specifically vote to opt out, which they would have to do at their own meetings. So that's essentially a general synopsis of what I'm looking for. The two options that we have available for how to accomplish this are either an emergency order or an ordinance. An emergency order requires less votes to accomplish, but the problem is the enforcement option is relatively severe in that it's a second degree, treated as a secondary misdemeanor, where you'd face up to 60 days in jail as well as a fine. I think that's excessive. I'd much rather go the ordinance route where we can say, okay, first time written warning, second time a civil citation, where you have a small monetary fine, so that we're not putting people in jail, even in theory, over not wearing a mask or not wearing a mask where they're supposed to. So I'm happy to chat more about it, but in the interest of time, I know we've got a lot left.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So just a couple of quick questions here.
Sure.
Have you, and I appreciate code enforcement there helping out local law enforcement. Have you spoken with the sheriff's office? Is this something that he can do with current manpower? I, you know, I have not, so I'm curious.
I would hesitate to speak for the sheriff as to whether he would approve, disapprove, or remain neutral as to this. I really don't know that it's my place to do that. I've not had a real formal conversation with him about this, so I can't do that, unfortunately.
Okay. And another one, and you can probably handle this as an attorney, Ms. Bentley provided us with an exhaustive list of municipalities and counties that had gone forth with these type of ordinances or mechanisms. And some of them were interesting in the cause of action that was created. One of them particularly, I believe that was Monroe County. A cause of action could be created with the business if the ordinance went through. Can you explain, and I'm sorry, I did not go to law school, so what liability would the businesses have when it came to this ordinance or this?
In terms of businesses, the onus in what I'm proposing would be on the individual that has to wear the mask, not on the businesses to enforce or not enforce it. I can tell you, you know, we've heard from folks that, quite frankly, from what I can tell, seem to view every possible regulation as illegal, or a violation of freedom, or civil rights, or liberties. You know, there are plenty of restrictions that exist, and I haven't used the seatbelt. I know that that was pointed out and struck down almost, perhaps, as a straw man argument, but I don't think I've ever used the seatbelt example. You know, speed limits, they exist to protect others. Dog leash laws, child labor laws, contractor licensing requirements, car insurance laws. You can't run around nude in public. It's to protect others. You can't get drunk and drive. It's generally not to protect the individual that's drunk that's behind the wheel. It's to protect everyone else. So there are plenty of laws that exist to protect others.
And, sorry.
Yeah.
It was bad, maybe my question was off, but, yeah, and I'm not arguing with that analogy.
Sure.
But if I run around naked in a store, it's, there's no cause of action for that business for the other patrons, whereas some of these ordinance that have been written, there is a cause of action for that business. So it's nothing to do with speeding laws. I'm just concerned about having businesses act as, you know, not only police enforcement, but also
I agree with you.
may have some sort of liability. And this, you know, again, Monroe County, for example, this is the case, you know, that it did happen, and should this go forward, I want to make sure that that's not, you know, encumbered within the proposal.
No, that's
Again, I haven't had the opportunity to see it.
That's, I mean, that's a valid concern. It certainly is an interesting one. What I'll tell you is, you know, I cannot categorically say that no one will be sued as a result. The fact is, anyone can sue anyone else for anything. Iran just put out an arrest warrant for Donald Trump. Do I think Donald Trump is up at night over that? No, I wouldn't be concerned if I were him. If he wants to go visit Tehran, he might want to be concerned, but the bottom line is, you know, do I think that someone may sue us as a result? Of course. Do I think it's going to be a meritorious suit? I've not seen any arguments that have advanced to the point where they have been ruled as holding any degree of water.
Yeah, and again, I'm sorry, I wasn't inferring that someone would be suing Brevard County. I think we have Ms. Bentley back there. I'm very confident in her ability to defend us. I'm more concerned with the business that would be liable should that happen. And can you walk us through the steps as an attorney? If you're a business owner, what rights do you have, absent of any action of this commission, to preclude people from coming into your business without a mask?
Well, you can, I mean, an individual business certainly is free to impose the requirements that they want, and what I would tell you is, as a fallback, if this doesn't go through as it's been contemplated, I would ask that at a dead minimum, and again, this is a fallback, that we ask the local businesses to require it. Certainly, the essential businesses, and by that I mean grocery stores, drugstores, doctors' offices, dental offices, things, places where people have a much harder time avoiding. But, you know, I don't, you know, I don't want to opine as to what creative cause of action someone might file against a local business, but I've not seen or heard of anything that appears to be meritorious, simply because a business exists in which there's a mask mandate, either implemented by the local municipality or by the county government. I've not seen that at this point.
Thank you.
Can I jump in?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay, I just want to say, I don't think I'm going to support this, but let me explain why. First of all, I think it's really good that you brought this to the public attention, because I think people should wear masks in high-capacity areas, because it does protect you when you wear one. I had a friend that had a kidney transplant. He wore a mask for months because the doctor didn't want him getting infection, so it does do something. But Commissioner Isnardi jumping on this anytime if I say something that's a little bit off, because I really trust your opinion. But when we first went into this, they talked about flattening the curve. So we were expecting some curves. And honestly, at the beginning of June, we had the launch, we had Memorial Day parties, we had graduation, and in the middle of June, we had the civil rights protest. I fully expected to see some curves starting to go up. And so when this happened, I reached out to the medical community, and I couldn't reach out to you, Commissioner Isnardi, because I don't want to talk, but I asked, are we getting overwhelmed? Any problems? They said, no, everything's fine. And Commissioner Isnardi, are you seeing any upswing with any problems as far as medical treatment or anything?
Absolutely none. And in fact, I talked to Steve Johnson myself over the last few days, and he had said that not only is he not seeing a big spike in employee, employees testing positive, which, you know, those are the frontline people that see sick people all the time, not just for the medical group, but for the Health First system. He's not short of employees. He's not hurting for employees. He's not concerned about overwhelming the health system. And, I mean, those, that was the discussion I had with him yesterday, and he was pretty clear on that. So he's not concerned as far as us not being able to handle if we do have another upswing or an increase in hospitalizations, but, yeah.
Okay, so you just kind of confirmed what I was thinking, and I reached out to our hospital too and asked questions, and a few doctors. So I was, I thought this was going to happen exactly two weeks after the protests is when we started seeing the spikes of 40, 104, 127. And I do think we're going to see it come down again and back up. But I think as far as the amount of positive cases, I think we also found out they started testing younger people in the month of June, so these numbers are going up. So I agree, there is more testing. But I think the significant thing here of the research, and again, I'm no expert, and everybody's become experts lately, but I'm not. That's why, please jump in. But if I'm going to watch the hospital, whether they're going to get overwhelmed or not, because this was supposed to be it, because they told me we were going to have this for a year, highs and lows, and the goal was not to overwhelm the hospitals. They said, look, 80% of the population's going to get this thing. And hopefully, if we don't overwhelm the hospitals, people aren't going to die of this. And, you know, flu season's coming up, and you talked about the vaccines, they're going to get a vaccine for this, and no one's going to get it. So, you know, this is here with us, so if we have a summer time here where the younger people are getting it, and they're not getting desperately sick or in the hospital, they're building up resistancy, this kind of will lower the risk in the wintertime, because they're not going to be carrying around this infection. As far as the mask, when I go into high-density areas, I pop one on, but if I'm able to stay six feet away, you know, I'm not doing that, but please wear them if you're in those areas. Wash your hands, do those things you need to do. If you're in a high-risk category, just don't go out right now until there is a vaccine and you're able to get it. But as far as getting everybody else out there trying to run life, if they're not in any more risk than getting a cold or flu, you know, we just, you know, we got to weigh this. But again, I think the rates are starting to come down also, Dr. Isnardi, because I think we hit that peak from the protest of being all packed together, and those are the high-risk time periods. But again, I'm not going to vote to support this right now, and I think the hospitals are saying they're not overwhelmed, medical professionals are not overwhelmed, and so I just do hope everybody does what they need to do, but that's why I'm not going to support this today.
Let me jump in as well, because I, you know
I'm good with this right there.
Sure.
So I don't know where everybody else is, but I do know your thought on it, so
Sure, I do want to chime in, though, because I think there is something important to bring up with respect to that. I've talked with Steve Johnson as well, and I think your conversation was profoundly different from mine. You know, I've written statements from him, from Jeffrey Stahlnaker, and also from one of the other folks who's a COO over there, and they don't really match with what I'm hearing from you. And I'm not saying that anything is being misrepresented, but I don't know that the
I can promise you that it's not.
Right, and I'm not saying that at all.
And I know you included part of your statement in your presentation in the beginning, and he had asked, and he had said that his entire statement was going to be read in, if it was going to be read in the record.
Sure, I'm happy to read it in now if you'd like.
And I can finish it for you if you like.
Yeah.
He said, he of course recommends masking, like most of us health professionals do, and he had said, however, it is not our role to make public policy and defer to the judgment of those who have been empowered to do so. We have confidence in our elected officials to act in the best of the interests of our community. Health First continues to care for Brevard and will offer clinicians, scientists, and other relevant persons to support the commission, should it choose to form a post-pandemic task force to consider public policy issues for future pandemics and related events.
Okay.
Because he made it very clear to me on the phone in more than one conversation, and it shouldn't be about one individual.
Sure.
But he made it very clear to me that he did not want to be, you know, endorsing any policy that we move forward, that he would be more than happy to work, you know, as a sort of a post, as post-committee person to look at this pandemic, because this is new to all of us. And our, you know, the Health First stance, at least from my perspective, not just as a provider, but as a person that works for that company, they have a universal masking policy, and we all abide by it. I think it's great. I think this is healthcare. That's what we should be doing. That's the responsible thing to do for our patients. And that was something they implemented early on. We do temperature checks at the beginning every time we enter a building, and the masking policy has actually gone so far now to be outside. When you're outside of the building, they want us to wear masks, because they want the public to see that we're doing our best thing, everything possible to keep them safe, so.
Yeah, but I'll tell you, and again, I agree, Steve doesn't want to be involved with making a political decision, but if you look at the statement that I believe he thumbed up as well from Jeffrey Stahlnaker, who's the chief physician executive for Health First, the pertinent part that concerns me is, wearing masks will also preserve our ability to treat patients who are ill and safeguard the health of our medical professionals on the front lines providing care. My conversation with him, yeah, it indicated that at present, at the immediate next several days, they're not at risk of having issues with not having adequate staff, but there was concern expressed that in the not-so-distant future, there may be a problem if the workers that are treating folks, the clinicians, continue to get infected. So I, you know, I can't speak as to why there may have been a difference in how it was conveyed to you and how it was conveyed to me.
And I asked that question, and he said 20 associates tested positive, that most were community-acquired, and that's out of 10,000 associates that work for the company. So nothing has been shut down, employee, they aren't short of employees, they're not scrambling, and none of that stuff. And some of that stuff, I'm not saying was you
Sure.
but was misrepresented. So I just, you know, I asked him those questions because I had a genuine concern, because I wasn't seeing it from the medical group side, so I wanted to ask about the health policy.
So you said 20 out of 10,000?
Yeah.
Are the 10,000 of those folks that are actually treating patients, or those folks that work in Advent and would never have contact with someone that reports that you are?
Well, these are, of the 20, most were community-acquired, and most were people who were at the same event. So they're not catching it, you know, necessarily in the facility. So their contact with COVID patients, obviously, they're within healthcare, they're probably a little more cautious than the average, I'm guessing. But, but the question was, you know, are they having trouble filling positions, or they're short of positions? Are, you know, a bunch of people in their facilities sick? And that just wasn't the case.
Yeah, it's different from the way it was, at least the way that I understood it.
Okay.
In the nicest, most diplomatic way I can phrase it.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I heard all the statements, and I like masks. I think that they do work for the most part. They're better than nothing. But I think masks should be a personal choice, not a government mandate, so I won't be in favor of doing anything with this either.
Yeah, that makes the discussion rather quick here, so at least we can move on to the next item, but
I was going to say, can I speak?
Sure.
Do you mind? Again, and I don't want to go through the laundry list of why I don't think the mandate's the way to go. I think there's other things we can do as far as education goes. I wouldn't even be opposed to requiring businesses to at least post their masking policy. I thought that was a great idea from Satellite Beach, from one of their council members, because at least it takes the burden off of them. This is what you're walking into when you walk into our facility. Either we have masked employees or we don't, but it kind of lets the rest of everybody who's not sure what their policy is, because I know there's a lot of businesses that require it. I think you, I think I would encourage people to wear masks where it's warranted. I do personally. I have masks, I have masks all over my car, I have them in my purse, I give them to people that are, that haven't been used, of course, and that's something that we do at work that I'm happy to do. I want to protect other people. But I don't want to jump the gun here, especially if our numbers are going down. We are testing more people. I pulled those numbers today. I mean, I pull them every day, but I pulled those numbers, and our percentage of positives is higher, but it's so easy to get testing now, and we have drive-through at Eastern Florida. I have patients contacting me all the time, saying, oh, by the way, I got tested, I'm negative. Well, who's reporting that? I know we had difficulty at one point getting those labs, all of those labs to communicate to the Department of Health. So if those numbers are going down, and I think even Maria Stahl from the Department of Health said, we could possibly be leveling out, we just don't know. And I think putting this mandate in place is, it not only does have, has the potential to overwhelm our law enforcement, because everybody's going to be in the mask police, but it has the potential to put businesses at risk as well, because if they have to provide PPE equipment to people that need to frequent their business or for their employees, they may not be able to. So, again, I don't want to go off on too many different tangents. It's not for me, you know, thumping the Constitution as much as it is, is this something that we can effectively enforce? And I don't believe it is something that we can. But again, as a medical provider, I would encourage people socially distance, wash your, wash your hands. I almost said damn hands, but I was trying to be nice. Wash your hands, stay away from crowds if you can. There are a lot of other things you can do to keep people safe, and I would just encourage people to do that. And I'll do whatever I can on my end to educate people and to try to, you know, promote that. And again, I'd be open to solutions that don't require us to become mask police, because I don't, I don't think it's manageable at this point. I don't think it's something that we can put on law enforcement. I'd rather have them fighting crime than dealing with domestic issues. I don't know if you've ever been yelled at in a Publix for going down the aisle the wrong way, but I have, by a woman who was two feet from me not wearing a mask. And I was wearing a mask, but didn't see the arrows on the floor. So people have different priorities, I guess, but anyhow.
Just keep in mind, though, you're always going to have a not-so-trivial percentage of people that unless they're required to do the right thing, will not. I mean, a prime example is the
But they probably wouldn't do it with the mandate in place anyway. I found it ironic that the doctor that spoke, you know, I was listening to what he was saying until you thanked him for calling while he's on vacation in Alaska. So he's going on vac, it's sort of strange, he's a physician and he cares, and he's following guidelines, but he's on vacation. I mean, we were trying
In a secluded area.
Band tourists just last month. I mean, I don't get it.
Yeah.
So everybody's going to have their own perspective on what they think is best? And I just think, you know, mandate or no mandate, I think people are going to do what they want to do, and I think our job as not just elected people, but in my unique position of having dual roles, is to educate people. And I think we can do that, and we can do that effectively. I see more people with masks than I've ever seen in the past 30 days than I saw 30 days before that, because I think people are more cautious and being cognizant of their fellow man, and I hope people will continue to be that way, but
Yeah, I don't know that it's necessarily appropriate to criticize someone for being in an isolated cabin in Alaska with his immediate family, but if that's what you think is good.
I'm not criticizing him. I just think it's ironic that he's, you know, demanding that we do the right thing while he's on vacation, so he's, you know, he's
Socially distanced from everyone.
And he's taking a personal risk, but I just, I just thought I'd point that out.
Yeah, I think the population density where he's at is a trivial fraction of what it is here, but again
Unless he walked there or beamed there, he still had to travel, but
Well, and you're right when you say that not everybody's going to wear a mask. If somebody isn't afraid of a deadly virus, then you're not going to make them wear a mask.
Here's the issue, Commissioner, that the fact is
If you tell them that they're going to get slapped on the hand or slapped on the wrist, well, I'm not afraid of a virus, so why do I care about being slapped on the hand? So that's the problem you have. I was down in the Keys when, before they did their mandate on businesses, and I was there when they did the mandate. But even before they did the mandate, they had businesses there that posted their policy on the door. So you would walk in, or you would walk to the door, and it would say, masks are required in these premises. And when you walked in, one of the people working there would tell you, if you didn't have one on, that you have to wear one, and if you don't have one, they'll give you one. And then there were other establishments that didn't care. They just said, this is a no-mask facility. But then after they came up with the policy, that, and their mandate is directed at businesses, that all businesses have to, that work with the public, all businesses have to, the patrons, not, no, not the patrons, yeah, the patrons, the patrons and the people that work there have to wear masks, except in restaurants. Now, here's what's silly. You have to wear the mask into the restaurant, but once you sit down, you can take it off. But the waitstaff has to keep wearing them. And I thought that was interesting, too, because when I was down there, some waitstaffs wore them, some didn't, and some were half and half. But once they came out with the mandate, then all the waitstaffs wore them. So maybe something like that would be worth considering.
See, the thing that concerns me, we had, the funny thing is, apart from all the healthcare professionals who spoke, I do want to point out all in favor, although that's neither here nor there at this point. The one doctor that we had that identified himself as such was a doctor, I believe, of architecture, and he indicated very unambiguously that he's been in contact with someone who was diagnosed or was positive with COVID, yet he's fine. That's the person I'm afraid of, that person. My sister-in-law has COVID. You know what? She feels fine, too, but guess what? She's isolated because she's doing the right thing. That guy, I would never be in, they want, the folks that were upset that we weren't downstairs with them, that person is the reason why. I don't want to be anywhere near him. He may feel perfect, but guess what? That doesn't mean he isn't shedding the virus right now. But, well, that's the problem. You can't see it. And it's out there. It's for real. Well, I would propose, I mean, and we can move into the CARES Act item in a second, but I would propose at a minimum that we at least try to facilitate those that want to wear masks wearing them. So I would ask that we look at allocating some significant amount of CARES Act funding to purchasing face coverings for the people that want them. You know, if there's an issue sourcing them, I don't care what their income is, if they're able to source them, if they don't have the income to purchase them, although I do recognize they're relatively inexpensive, it would be nice to take some percentage of the money that we've gotten from the feds to purchase them and make them available for folks.
Or maybe we find out who needs them, because I'd be glad to help people out, get them. They're only 67 cents on Amazon, so I wouldn't mind helping a few people or figuring out. Our chambers made a bunch of them, and they're handing it out in the community also, so I wouldn't mind, you know, helping that even as a district project up where we are either, so.
You know, I'm going to pass the gavel for a minute. I am going to make a motion. I don't want this thing to die at this point. All right, my motion is to, and I don't know, Ms. Bentley, if you think this is better, probably as an ordinance, to require businesses, so any business that has a tax receipt, to post whether they require or mandate face coverings be worn conspicuously by any entrance that's accessible to customers.
I'll second that.
All right.
I don't think that's, that encumbers anybody. It's just an informational thing.
And we did something very similar, and I actually talked to Ms. Bentley about this earlier. We did something very similar with the fertilizer issue, and all it does is it informs the public. So if your grandmother goes to Publix, or if she goes, I hate to use a brand, but if she goes to Publix, or she goes to the pharmacy, then she's able to see right before she walks in there what their policy is.
Well, Maria Stahl said that to me. She refuses to go to a restaurant where the waitstaff isn't wearing, and she said she's walked into them and told the manager that, I'm not staying because your waitstaff doesn't wear masks. So if that were posted on the door out front, I'm a free enterprise guy. It's, they're motivated and driven by profits, and if they see that their business is falling off because they're requiring or not requiring, they can go from there, but it's their choice.
Yeah, and it's, you know, I contemplate, you know, whether it's yes or no, it still has to be posted regardless of what it is. They just need to be clear about it.
How long are we going to give them to do that? I'm
We could make it effective, you want to say?
And what if, what if a property doesn't do that? It's just, it's just a lot to talk through and work through. And we did the others. through and work through. And we did the others. We found places that specifically sold fertilizer, and that was just for educational items.
Well, you're not going to do anything, because just like the governor prohibited bars, well, I can tell you that there's a bar, and I'm going to name it. It's Cabana Shores, right by me.
Yeah.
The owners of different restaurants like Grills, Squid Lips, and Catana's were, are all in the same area, and they shut down their bars. And Cabana Shores, if you're familiar with it, when you drive by-
All outdoors.
It's outdoors. So you can see that everybody's at the bar. They didn't abide by it.
I will tell you though-
Whether they are or not now, but it's a voluntary thing.
I think if, I think if we do an educational promotion, I think this is helping with it. And I think that might be a discussion we should have in a little bit, get it a little bit more defined on how it's going to work. I think this is a good opportunity to educate the public, like you said, but I do think this is about to come back down. I think we're going to see a lot of curves. Maybe we need to do something prolonged into the future. That's why I like some of the things. We're going to reimburse some PPE things for small businesses. But I think this might be worthy of a second conversation on some ideas of how to help the communicate, community get educated. But right now, just to mandate it for every business, you're going to have to work through that with me, because we are going to stress a lot of businesses out of figuring out how to hang it, where to hang it, and-
Just at the front door.
Just at the front door.
And where by an entrance.
And it could be, maybe if you're comfortable with it, maybe a business that has more than so many patrons that either frequent it or-
Okay, just like a piece of paper out front or saying something.
And you know, when I also talked to Eden about it, too, and it's probably not Eden's lane, but we could come up with, if it helps businesses, we could come up with a form that they could print right offline.
I would like that.
You know, that has Brevard County symbol on it. And that way, it's something, somebody knows to look for. It's something that's, that's uniform, that probably will take 30 minutes for somebody to put together. It's just basically some graphics, but that, you know, either this is our policy or this isn't. Doesn't have to be technical and crazy legal, but-
It's just an informational thing.
Exactly. Just letting people know when they go in.
So they can inform the public that want to go into their establishment.
Not requiring them to do anything other than notice. And that, again, is more like a courtesy to-
Whether this is a no-mask or mask facility.
Yeah.
Give them two weeks.
I think that's plenty. I mean, I wouldn't do anything longer than that, because frankly, the returns diminish the further we push it out.
Well, make it a week then. I don't-
Okay, that's all good. But how are we going to get that information out, too? Not everybody watches us.
Social media.
Social media just-
I trust Don Walker. I see him, yeah, I see him waving in the back.
I'm sure we have email addresses of a lot of our business tax receipts, too.
I'm not, I'm not looking at attaching, at this point, some sort of prohibition or penalty.
I know. I wouldn't agree with that anyways. But if we get it out, what if we do it like a recommendation, that stores get these out as quick as possible?
Well, of course, if they want to put it up sooner than a week, God bless them. They're more than welcome to do that. I'd love that, but I think giving them a week is reasonable. And then, you know, I hate, hate to put it on Don. Hell, I'll work on Publisher or some photo editing or graphics editing software to put something together if need be, if staff doesn't want to chomp on it.
So are we going to make this an ordinance?
Ms. Bentley, what do you think the best way to handle this is?
If we do that, I'm not going to agree to a week.
Given that we're not looking at having teeth.
Well, you have two options. If you want to use your emergency powers under Chapter 252, you can do that, because you have taken over that authority. That does have the penalty clause of 60 days or $500. If you do the emergency ordinance, you have the civil option for enforcement, code enforcement, that sort of thing. And the other thing you need to consider is whether or not you want the cities to be able to opt out.
Definitely.
I'd be willing to discuss this next week at the next meeting and make a decision.
I'd like to give it a shot, quite frankly, because we have a motion in a second, but-
You're welcome, too, but that's probably why I wouldn't support it today, so, but I might next week.
So I, what I'm thinking is, obviously, the emergency order is, I think, out of the question. I'm not looking at sticking someone in jail for any period of time over this. I think it would have to be an ordinance then. So given that's the case, you know, what other questions do you think would apply, Ms. Bentley?
You've got the one week, you've got the opt-out, you've got the mask or no mask, simple notice is what I'm understanding you want.
Right.
Anything else?
Yeah, this is a no-mask facility, or this is a mask facility.
If they want, as long as it's unambiguous, I don't care. They can have a picture of an N95 mask with a slash through it, and I'm good with that, as long as it's clear to someone that's looking at it.
No, because that would tell people that there's no masks allowed if you did that.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You're right. No, I apologize. That's a bad idea on my part.
But the reason why I suggested that county kind of have that to provide is because then it's uniform, and then people-
I think that's a good idea.
Then people know what to look for.
Do we require that they use the county one, or do we let them use their own? I don't care either way.
I think it would be good to do the county one. Then it's uniform. Everybody doesn't have to wonder. Some business person's got to run a business. They don't want to have to worry about-
They don't have to create it, then it's easy to do, and it's-
So my last question is, do you want me to bring this back on the 7th, or do you want to do it today and authorize the chair to sign what we-
If I have the votes, I'd like to do it today. If not, I'd like to bring it back on the 7th.
And I think it's a good compromise. It's a good compromise to make sure and to encourage people and to take businesses out of the awkwardness of-
Sure.
Of either having their employees wear and-
Yeah, because each, each business person has to know whether they are in favor of or not. And it's just a simple matter of them letting the public know when they walk in the door with their preferences.
Right, we want you to get infected, or-
And just for the record, I also spoke with Ms. Bentley, too, about, you know, there was some discussion, you know, is a business allowed to force people to wear a mask? Well, businesses are allowed to make those rules because it's non-discriminatory.
Right.
Because it's not based on race, sex, gender, any of that stuff.
Well, they can kick them out if they want to. That's the other thing. If they're not forcing you to wear a mask, your alternative is to walk out and go elsewhere.
Right. But I didn't want to put, my fear was I didn't want to put businesses in an awkward spot if I could avoid it. So this is just noticing. I'm okay with that.
And an emergency ordinance that requires a supermajority vote?
You know what? Let's see if we've got the votes. We'll call the question anyway.
Can I, can I ask a-
Sure.
Is this, how are you defining business?
We had a nice definition that was, that was on a sheet that you have, Ms. Bentley.
So would this religious institutions, would they be required to do this?
To post it?
Correct.
If you would support it without it, I'll leave religious institutions exempt.
I'm, listen, I'm most likely, I did not support the fertilizer one. I think this is an infringement on private property rights. I mean, soon we'll be, this is the start. We'll be in New York very quickly, where we have to put up the letter grade on restaurants as to whether or not they received an A, B, or C. I just want to, I'm just wondering if we're going to put mandates here on religious institutions and what the penalty should be. And really, do we want to go down that-
Zero penalty?
Pardon?
No penalty.
It's just an informational thing. But I, if you want to exempt religious institutions-
No, no, no.
Most of the churches I know are requiring masks anyway.
We have a definition if you want, this is what Leon County did. I can read it into the record if you'd like that.
Please.
Yes?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, to be clear, and I appreciate you counting votes, that, you know, I did not vote for the, I did not vote for the fertilizer one, because it was a mandate placed on businesses, and I see this as just the same way. So you'd have to run the table. You will not get my support on that.
But it's voluntary. It's voluntary on the business.
Well, listen, if a business wants to do it and it is truly voluntary, then we don't need to take action right now.
Yeah, but we're encouraging-
But us saying you have to do it.
It's a public informational thing, more than any, than anything. Isn't that the way you view it?
That's how I envision it. And if they don't want to do it, it's not like we're going to go and, you know, put the cuffs on them or give them a fine. Maybe a nasty look, and that's the extent of it.
I don't know. However, you want to handle it.
You could do a proclamation like you did for the social distancing.
And then we don't need the supermajority that way.
And it's voluntary.
All right, I'll go ahead and amend the motion to make it a proclamation.
You, a proclamation requesting that they do it. That's what you did with the business distancing?
I'd be comfortable with a proclamation. You talked to me right out of the other one, so.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, she's chairing now.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You are.
You don't get paid any extra.
Why is everybody talking out of line then? Just kidding, go ahead.
Ms. Bentley, a proclamation would carry less, even less weight than what the mandate we placed on fertilizer. Is that correct?
Correct.
So there's no penalty. This is the board suggesting that if a business is so inclined, because, again, we haven't seen any of this. If a business is so inclined to put up an advertisement of their choosing, they are more than welcome, and we support them in that decision.
Yes, it is a statement.
And if they don't, there's no penalty, there's no recourse, and we wish them well.
I don't know that I'm comfortable with that exact wording.
That, I like it. Well, because-
No.
Well, because right now, we haven't even discussed this. We're about to put mandates on business without vetting that all the way to see if we've got something that we haven't thought through. This is okay. We're doing exactly what we said. We're getting the promotion out. We encourage you guys to do this. We're asking you to do this. So...
I don't mind phrasing it that way, but-
How about if the wording is-
That's a proclamation, though, right?
We encourage and recommend.
How about strongly encourage?
Strongly encourage and recommend.
And then not, but if you don't, it's okay. Well, we won't, we won't be bothered by that. I'd like to leave that portion of it out.
Yeah. Well, come up with some wording. It's your motion.
And if you're counting votes, I'll be in favor of it. If the clauses are there at the bottom, we wish you well. There's no penalty. I don't want them to have to retain an attorney in order to interpret it, so I want it clearly spelled out.
I think it's pretty-
If you put that in there, then I'll be more than willing to support it. If that's left out, then I don't want there to be any type of ambiguity.
I think it'll be right at the beginning, that it is recommended by the Board of County Commissioners. It's not going to be mandated.
I mean, it almost seems like it's discouraging them from doing anything if we say, without there being a penalty clause, by the way, we're not going to do anything.
I think our recommendation says that. We're just recommending this.
Well, just as a side note, Jerry Demmings, who I served with on the CFX, you know that he mandated masks in Orange County, but they're not, they're not enforcing it.
And I've been out there, and you know what? I'll tell you, honest to God, people are wearing masks without there being a penalty. They're wearing them simply because it's mandated.
He says it's working.
Okay, do we have a motion on the table?
Yes, a motion in a second.
Second.
What was your motion, sir?
Motion was to put in place a proclamation strongly recommending that businesses, as defined by Ms. Bentley and the definition that she read, I believe you read it in. Did you not?
I did not read it.
That she will be reading into the record right after I'm done making the motion, be required, well, excuse me, be strongly encouraged to post at all entrances accessible to customers, whether or not they require masks be worn, using a form to be provided by the county.
Okay.
Is that-
Yes.
Pretty well inclusive, second?
Ms. Bentley, do you need to read in the business definition right now, or am I fine to take a second?
Let me read it to you so you know where we're going. This is from the Leon County ordinance. A business establishment means a location with a roof overhead under which any business is conducted, goods are made or stored or processed, or where services are rendered. The term business establishment includes transportation network companies such as Uber and Lyft, vehicles operated for mass transit, taxis, limousines for hire, rental cars, and other passenger vehicles for hire. The term business establishment includes locations where nonprofit governmental and quasi-governmental entities facilitate public interactions and conduct business. In Leon County, they included, the term business establishment also includes places of worship. I don't know if you want all of that or part of that.
Since we're recommending it, I don't know that it makes a difference to leave it in there.
Okay, so I have a first or I have a second?
Second.
Can we call the question? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Passes four women. Commissioner, to buy an objection, and I guess I have to give you back the gavel. Okay.
All right, fair enough. Now, if I can remember where we're at. Okay, so I think we're, are we all fully ventilated with respect to the first round? We can move into the second item? All right, I apologize to everyone that may be downstairs or elsewhere that's waited for this on the CARES Act. I don't know how much intro my colleagues want to hear from staff, but-
Thank you, Frank. Yeah.
Mr. Abate, if you'd like?
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. We're going to the staff report, and I'm going to power through the presentation in terms of what we have. As you know, on May 5th, the board allocated CARES funds for five different areas: public health compliance, medical expenditures, public health, a public employee reassignment, and then you had unobligated public health and safety on a reserve basis to use for anything else we needed, including things like, you know, hurricanes, et cetera, where we would need it. And during that time, when you, when you did this, you also took from an area which was called economic support, there was $44 million, and you put $4.4 million into individual assistance for home rent, mortgage, utility, and utility deposits. And since that time, we told you at that point, we were going to give you reports in terms of what the expenditures are. So this is that report. And the first thing I wanted to share with you, because we're going to be discussing in a few minutes what you want to do with the unallocated dollars that were for, unobligated, excuse me, dollars for economic support, where we are today. Once again, we had $105 million that was allocated. Since that, and in the various categories that you see here that I've just mentioned, we have obligated, and when I say obligated, let me tell you what that means. That means it's either been spent to date, or it's outstanding requests that have been submitted to us that are being vetted. We are vetting it through an outside consultant who is helping us determine what would be CARES-eligible funding. And that's very, very important, because as you'll remember from what we talked about on May 5th, if we give any dollars to anybody, and they will come in and audit, the federal government will, to see whether or not it's CARES-eligible, the board will be responsible for paying that money back. So that's a very important aspect. So what you see here is that we've obligated in the categories that are up there, $10.3 million. That leaves a balance of $94 million, with 21 of that being unobligated public health and safety dollars that are available. Of that, about almost $40 million, a little less than $40 million, is the unobligated economic support, which the board directed that we look at a small business program options, which we're going to discuss in the next agenda item. But I did want to share with the board what it is that we're doing. So in the public health program, personal protective equipment, which the board's talked about, which we're going to talk about a little bit later as well, disinfection of public areas, quarantine, those are the kind of expenses that are in the public program health area. And what I want to share with you is what we've procured with PPE expenses in, whether it's gowns, disinfectant spray, gloves, face shields, expenses for the warehouse, disinfecting wipes, procedural masks, KN95 masks. These are the types of PPE that we've procured beyond what FEMA, the state of Florida, has provided to us. And so in those areas, you can see, those are the expenditures that we've made. Now, where are they being distributed? They're being distributed, as you see here, charter offices, hospitals, nursing homes, long-term care facilities, other healthcare providers, Brevard County agencies, including what we're planning to do and have some PPE on the side in case we have a hurricane and we have to do sheltering for masks, et cetera, and what we've done to, what we've distributed already to municipalities. So I just want to give the board that information so you see what's going on. Another area, which is an important area, is medical expenditure programs. That includes such things as the COVID-19 testing, and as you know, we've partnered with hospitals. I'll share some more specifics in a minute with that, with you on that. Emergency medical transport, public safety, COVID-19 responses. And like I've indicated, we have partnered with our Health First system, with Parish Medical Center, to do community testing. As a matter of fact, Parish was doing it before we partnered with them. But we've included here what their expenditures have been. Theirs are significantly more, because they were doing significantly more outreach into the community, buying vans specifically for that purpose. They have a number of staff that have been dedicated to going out into the community to do that testing. So you see what they've spent there. Health First has given us what they expended, about 40, a little over $45,000 thus far. Municipalities are doing things. You may have heard some of the things they're doing for sewer water testing, lab supplies, et cetera. So that's all covered under the medical expenditure program. But another aspect of what the board asked us to do was look at what hospital expenditures have been, because you were concerned and wanted to look at potentially what you would do in terms of using eligible care dollars for the hospital systems. And so we have three major hospital systems in Brevard. In this particular slide, what you see is that Parish and Health First have told us what they've expended beyond what we've already given to them for PPEs. Retrofit, and by retrofit is requirements that they were needed to do, like to have negative air pressure in certain facilities, to have different access points where they were, you know, testing people for COVID when they were coming into their hospital systems, for sanitization in their facilities, for staffing requests that were specifically related to COVID, and other areas, which they've given us that information. And what you'll see is that Health First has given us unreimbursed expenses, and it's important to be unreimbursed, because one of the things the board has told us is that you want to make sure, one, that it's unreimbursed, and two, that it's an eligible expense. So that's what we're going to be looking at and vetting that. And, and so you see that in the different areas. Health First, it says it's a little over $7 million. Parish Medical Center has indicated it's a little bit over $5 million. And, and I have an asterisk down here in the bottom of this slide. That asterisk is, it does not include lost revenue, which is an eligible expense for businesses. It's not for government. It's not for us, but it is for businesses, nonprofits. And so Health First has indicated they had about $64 million of lost revenue for postponement of elective procedures, emergency room, et cetera. Parish Medical Center had about $11.5 million. Health First also let us know that so far, what they had received was about, with all those losses, that's $7 million, that $64 million lost, they've been reimbursed about $25 million. So you can see what the difference is and what's outstanding. Parish has indicated they were reimbursed about $2.9 million when they had $11.5 million of lost revenue, and that $5 million plus of other expenses that are indicated here. Once again, staff has not completed, nor has our consultant in vetting that, but depending on where the board wanted to go in that area, out of that $15 million, you could be doing something in that area if you so chose. Next area that I wanted to talk about was public health compliance programs.
Mr. Abate? I apologize for interjecting, but when you say vetting that, before you move on, what do you mean? I mean, what specifically has been done?
What I mean by that is, just because it's been submitted to us, it doesn't necessarily mean we have sufficient documentation that we feel we need to have in order for us to make a payment, and then when the Treasury comes and asks us to justify-
CYA.
Yeah, that we have the documentation, because the Treasury, US Treasury guidelines say that we have to maintain the documentation that, you know, we don't have to have it ahead of time before we make the payment, but when they come in to audit, we're going to have to prove it to them. And so we have a third party, which is Tetra Tech-
Yes, sir.
Which is our FEMA reimbursement-
Yes, sir.
That is guiding us and looking at expenses that are submitted to us to make sure it's a thumbs up. If you recall, one of the things we did with municipalities was a couple of things. One, tell them that you're only going to get for things that we clearly believe are going to be compensable or eligible. And two, that if the Treasury comes back, there's a clawback provision that says, you know, if Treasury comes back and said it wasn't eligible, you agree to have to return that funding. So we're doing it in good faith, and we're giving the dollars out, but what I've heard from the board, unless we change it, is that it's very important to make sure that the board isn't left on the hook with those dollars if and when. And we don't think it's going to be if. It's when the audit comes in from Treasury that they're going- to be if, it's when the audit comes in from Treasury that they're going to be looking at that. So that's what I meant by vetting.
I appreciate it, sir.
Okay. The next area under public health compliance programs is county jail sanitation, and stuff they had to do for social distancing, teleworking expenses, sick and family leave expenses from Family First, non-congregate sheltering. And what you'll see here is that the obligations we have is for charter officers, it's $2.4 million, and that includes a lot for the sheriff, for jail sanitization, jail transport, teleworking, and communications responses that they've submitted to the board in a recent email and submitted to us in terms of things that they're looking for and believe will be eligible, which they've said that they believe is, and of course, we will get that vetted as well. And then what we've done for municipalities, and when I say what we've done, what we've received from them, that's currently in the vetting process, and what we've done, and where we are in Brevard County, our own agencies in terms of where that will be, and you can see, those are the dollars, how they're split up. The next area is public employee reassignment programs, where we've reassigned people, or the sheriff has, or municipalities have for, dedicated to COVID-19 response. And here, what you'll see is, there's about $700,000 from charter offices, municipalities have significantly less, and we have about $600-plus thousand that are dedicated there. Once again, that all goes back to that earlier slide where we talked about the $10 million that was obligated so far, either paid or in the process of being vetted. And with that, that's what I wanted to share in the first half, but I do want Ian to be able to give you an update, and he's promised he's going to go, well, he actually hasn't promised yet, he's being directed to go as fast as I went and share with you the rental mortgage program and the food assistance program that he's been working on.
All right, so as you know, as Frank mentioned, the $4.4 million up to was allocated by the board for these programs. So far, for the rent mortgage program, we've had 459 applications. About 64% of them have come from municipalities, the remainder from unincorporated Brevard. We're having about 28 and 1/2, almost 29%, that are being returned. And what we did is, we actually, they're returned if they're missing documentation that we need to vet, as Frank was saying. We did make a decision that they have to be missing three or more documents for us to return them. If they're less than three, we actually reach out to the homeowners to, and/or renters, to try and get those documents into us. We're having about an 18, I think it's up to about 18.5% denial rate. Reasons for denial, the most frequent, that they have not been able to prove that there's a tie to coronavirus, as we've discussed, that's actually a requirement of the Treasury Act dollars. We have the, they have to have lost 25% of their income, they've not been able to prove that. And then what are considered liquid assets, we have a cap of, they can't have more than $8,000 in liquid assets. So liquid assets are those things that they can quickly turn into cash, you know, that's your checking, savings, that's CDs, bonds. And so, you know, we've had people come in who sought, you know, help with a mortgage, but they're sitting on $95,000 in checkings and savings. And so that's, again, that third-party verification that we do to catch those items, excuse me. The average amount of assistance that we've provided so far is about $1,812. And so when we look at the forecast for the rest of the program period, we believe, based on the current obligation, the denial rate, the applications, and the average amount, that the $4.4 million is sufficient for the rent and mortgage program. What I specifically wanted to talk to you today about is the food stability program. As you can see from the charts, the one on my left, the pounds of food distributed, there's been a 98% increase from March through June 20, from March through June 2019 to March through June 2020. So that 98% increase is, equates to about 22, almost 23, 2.3 million meals increased. You can see also the increase in assistance calls to 2-on-1 in request for food, and how they get food, where food banks are, so on and so forth. So when we look at forecasted food needs, when we look at backfilling the traditional food banks and pantries, and also the pop-up pantries that are only in place due to coronavirus, there are a lot of different ones, mostly at churches. We look at that could be an additional, again, through the end of the program period, an additional up to $3 million. We come to that number because we look at the number of trucks that we could potentially get up to a week, depending on availability, the cost of those trucks, and approximately five months left in the program period. We're also looking at doing additional weekend meals through the Children's Hunger Project. We're looking at purchasing up to 151,800 meals through the end of the program period. That's approximately up to 6,600 meals a week to hand out at the different feeding locations that are currently in place to support, again, the families that need additional And then the final piece that we're looking at, and we're trying to get creative, because, again, we're having people who are seeking assistance, who potentially have never had to seek assistance, and so we're trying to meet them where they potentially are. So we've been experimenting, and we did the first time last week, looking at supporting our farmers' markets and providing some assistance through that. We have a process in place to, again, vet the people who go through, they're able to get some additional fresh fruits, vegetables, those type of items from the farmer's market. It's only food commodities that they're able to get there, and it has a twofold benefit. It helps the family, plus it also helps our ag industry. And so based on those additional forecasted needs on the food program, I do have some requested board actions. The first one is to request an additional $4 million in the CARES Act funding to support just the food stability program. The second item is to authorize the county manager to execute that agreement with the Children's Hunger Project for up to $754,46 for those weekend meals. It's up to, because we will only pay per meal, they will be invoicing us on a reimbursement basis, so we only pay for what we actually receive and hand out. And then the third item is to authorize the county manager to execute any other agreements or contracts that support the food stability program, because we anticipate that there's going to be some needs as we look at the foreclosure and eviction moratorium ending. As we're seeing, and again, like we've talked earlier, the waves, we have some businesses that have chosen to close down again. And we also, you know, there are other issues out there that are going to be happening, specifically the ending of the federal additional unemployment benefits. Was that fast enough, Frank?
So a couple of things. One would be the requested board action, and whether the board wants to do that, and then I want to just circle back on one point on the medical expenditure program. But if the board wants to discuss whether you're willing to have a motion and do this in accordance with the request that Ian's made, I guess it's up to board discussion.
Does someone, with respect to the items that are identified on the current slide, wish to make a motion to approve all of them in aggregate?
Someone.
All right, I'll go ahead. Oh, you beat me to the second, Commissioner Pritchett. All right, motion from Commissioner Smith, second from Commissioner Pritchett. Discussion on any of these items, the three bullet points on the requested board action page?
Yeah, some discussion.
All right, Commissioner Snartie?
I'm a little concerned with the third item. I'm in support, of course, of this food stability program, I think that's great. But the second and the third item concern me just a little bit, because we're, and I think what the Children's Hunger Project does is amazing. I think, you know, obviously, their outreach, but now we're talking about bringing in nonprofits again, and that concerns me a little bit. And the fact that item number three basically gives you full authority to, you know, and I'm not saying you do anything wrong or sinister, of course, but it's just too vague, and that concerns me.
And I understand that, Commissioner. It's not up there, but everything that we would bring forward for Frank, it always goes through risk management and county attorney. The Children's Hunger Project contract or agreement actually has been through both. The idea there, again, just, and I understand they're not-for-profit, but I also don't want to treat them differently if I'm, like, under the food bank program. If I, to support them, I have to contract with an ag company. You know, it's the same idea of whether it's private or not-for-profit, I'm just buying a commodity. So it's the same thing with the Children's Hunger Project, I'm buying the commodity, I'm buying the meal. So whether I'm buying it from a not-for-profit or a for-profit is not the purpose, it's to get the meals out. But I, and I understand what you're saying, and part of the reason, and part of the thought process on that third bullet point was because we may need to move quickly to address needs, and I didn't want to have to, as you gave me the permission at your last meeting to call a special meeting, I don't want to have to do that.
Right.
We do vet everything. Like I said, everything and every contract would go through, not only risk management, but also the county attorney's office.
And come to us maybe after the fact, if necessary? Because I don't have a problem with that. Because I actually really like this, because this is what we should be doing with those monies. We should be making sure we're taking care of our residents, and I think it's great.
So would you like some language change for the motion?
I don't know that I need language change, I just wanted clarification that it would come back to us if there's something that's modified, changed, added, or otherwise.
We could also, if you, if you, give you a higher degree of comfort, either we can bring it back in the report, or we could also have the chair, you know, execute the agreement with us. I don't know if that makes a difference.
When we do this, we're not paying management costs to people to do this, it's just purely getting the food out.
Correct, and this is, I'm not looking at using any of these dollars to support administration or operations for any companies. This is only, we are going to be buying commodities.
Right, good question, that's what you, you may need to ask that question, because like, we give out food, we don't charge for it all, where I am, so like this, we get it from Second Harvest, just so we can get it out. So, good question, Commissioner Snartie, because I didn't even think about that part, but good.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
You went a little too fast for me, Mr. Golden. How long, I got $4.90-something per meal, 160,000 meals, how long did you expect that to last?
We're saying to the end of the program period, but ideally.
Which is, how long, sorry?
Ideally, I'm looking at the end of November.
Okay.
And part of that has to do with the timing of invoices and the timing of the end of when we can expend these dollars. And I don't want to have any invoice come in in December that because of processing and the holidays, is not actually paid until after January 1.
Thank you.
So with respect to the motion, the motion stands, second stands? Any further discussion on that?
I'm good.
All right, we do have a stack of cards with respect to this item, I don't, on this item, but not on this particular.
Okay.
Mr. Bate?
Yeah, I was going to go back to the medical expenditures as they related to the hospitals to ask the, if I can go back to that. Okay. One thing that I had mentioned is that, you know, we are doing community testing with partners. So what you see here, that those expenditures are already incorporated as part of the $15 million, or $16 million that is allocated for medical expenditure. So we, once we vet it, those expenses to Parish, Health First, and municipalities will be paid out with the CARES dollars under that allocation, the board's already approved. What I'd like is guidance from the board, because the board at a prior meeting, I think it was the zoning meeting, indicated you wanted to look at what you were going to do potentially for hospitals. So since we shared that information, it could fall under the medical expenditure of that $16 million, and if the board wanted to give us any further direction on how you'd like to proceed, then, you know, we will obviously move that forward.
I'd like to jump in if I could, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Okay, so I love that you found those funds, and that Health First and Parish has submitted. I would like for Stewart still be able to submit, and I think that's, if you guys, since we're kind of at 16.1 or something, I think maybe cap it for each entity, $5 million, but it has to be reimbursable as far as what they're doing in the community. So I think the money's already there, but I think it would be smart maybe to just put a $5 million cap on each of the three entities for reimbursements.
So give each one $5 million?
Up to it, yeah.
Or some money?
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Well, they're already getting 16.1 in the reimbursements, but, and it has to be for the, here's the thought, guys, when we're doing this, and we're getting ready to talk about small businesses, but the field that Commissioner Snartie works in, and the hospitals, they don't have a choice. They have to treat people, and they have to make these changes. They can't just close their business down because they're not getting enough business. They have to do this. So we're reimbursing the counties and the cities. I think it's fair to reimburse the hospitals, because they're going in the hole, and even, I think even doctors' offices, we should throw that out to them also, if they're having to incur costs right now and things they have no control over, because they're not allowed to close their doors. So this is one of my better thoughts when we're using these federal funds for reimbursements, because they have to do this job, and we have to have them take near people medically. So I feel pretty good about this one.
Mr., yeah, sorry, Commissioner Tobias?
So I just thought maybe making a cap on it might be smart.
Well, I have no problem with a cap, but we've opened a whole can of worms. If we, can you go back one slide to the allocated, the 90, okay. So here we're talking somewhere in the magnitude of a million bucks, slightly over a million bucks, looking at that cumulatively. We're talking $16 million. We need, we need to, we need to look at this. First of all, I'm going to disclose, my brother is an employee of Health First and has been for quite some time. I also disclose, I have travelers' car insurance, and they sent me back a check, because insurance industries are making so much money right now because people aren't driving as much, or they're not going to the hospitals. And I have numerous reports here that talk about health insurance companies are making more money than they've ever made before. The premiums are coming in, but as we see in the surge, people aren't getting surgeries. And Health First saw this, and they bifurcated. So they have not only a business model in which they serve patients, but another one in which they're in insurance. So because they're losing on one end, even though much of it's reimbursed, and by the way, hospitals don't lose, let's, when we look at the salaries of individuals, when we could get into this, and you probably understand some of our nonprofits, and we'll talk about it a little bit later, when we get into small businesses, are, make far more than the folks here that run a billion-dollar enterprise. The $5 million seems a little bit arbitrary. I don't know the numbers of, why would we cap? Wouldn't it make more sense to cap it based on the number of patients that they may have? I imagine that Health First, I have no idea, but I imagine that Health First has many more patients and serves a great deal more than Parish, and Parish serves a great deal more than Stewart. I didn't even know there was a Stewart Health facility until we just talked about it. But again, and we'll get to this, a small business, this is going to open a lot, we're going to have a lot of questions when we get into reimbursing. What is a, what is a loss? I mean, I saw some of these numbers, that some of these healthcare facilities are claiming tens of millions of dollars in losses for postponed surgeries. So in other words, yeah, they didn't get the $50 or $60 million this month, but they'll get it the next. And if they don't get it the next, they'll get it the one after. I mean, I don't, as an accountant, as, I imagine that I couldn't do my taxes, you know, I couldn't do my taxes that way, getting a big bonus at, you know, January 1st, I still have to pay those taxes on that big bonus at the end of the year, so. I have no problem with this, if there's a motion to reimburse this, it sounds like these are in conjunction. My question on this one was, and I'm willing to do it, I just want to know why Parish is, whatever that is, 20 times the amount of community testing, have they worked with us that much more than Health First?
I believe their, their testing has been significantly more expansive. I think Health First was doing it at their hospital, they partnered with us, they have, they gave us their labor costs. I believe Parish has multiple vans, and I think they have like seven people dedicated to each one that's going out into the community, and has been since very early on, and so that's all incorporated in that particular number. If I was hearing right, what I'm, what I'm hearing is that the unreimbursed expenses that can be vetted, these plus the others that are on the next slide, there would be a cap for each organization by whatever amount the board decides to set, and that's what we would be working with the hospital systems. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I think, Commissioner Tobias, on some of this, that Health First got a lot more reimbursements, and, but I'm just saying, I think this is kind of the narrative.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with. I'm okay with, I, I was, I'm okay with this, a hundred percent. I don't need convincing. I was just curious as to why parish medical.
I think it's just the net of not being reimbursed as much, but I think, I just talked to Frank about it a bit, trying to figure out where he's at on, on what he's looking at for reimbursements. So he's really gonna have to do a lot of the work and the math on that. But as far as the three major hospitals, I don't know if it'll be more or less, because I know Health First covers a lot more area, but he would have to figure out the distributions on percentages.
That's why I'm, I'm kind of wondering why the cap, the cap number would be the same, considering that Health First is four times the system that parish is.
Well, I, I think they got like five times the amount of reimbursements already. So there's, there's a smaller net between the two about a pocket.
Four times the amount of employees, they have four times. So I imagine that you could, you could easily say that their loss was four times as much too.
It could, but I think they had like a, a nine million dollar differential and parish had, like, had like a seven. So I think Frank would have to get in and look at that.
I'd like to see those numbers a little more closely.
But we got sixteen point something, twenty point six million. What was it? I got it right down there.
Yeah, that was.
A total amount of funds to look at.
I guess this goes to Jill.
We haven't even heard from Stewart yet.
Those buckets were completely arbitrary, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, that, that bucket could be one point six million, or as long as it falls within that hundred and fifty, or that ninety-five million, correct? Because we, it was a hundred and five minus the ten that we've allocated.
Those were our best numbers on May fifth, where we thought those expenses would go. What we're talking about here is all we were giving you is, this is what the health systems, in response to our inquiry, our inquiry was.
Have not been vetted.
What are your, yeah, what are your unreimbursed expenses? And that's what the two hospital systems, and that's where staff stopped in terms of that, and we're coming back to the board to say, hey, this is the pool that's allocated, you know, you've allocated this amount of dollars. Do you want us to do any, a program that, you know?
So, so if we're counting votes here, can you go back to the million dollar one? My goal here, and we'll talk about it a little bit later, hopefully, is to allocate as few dollars as possible. We don't know how this is gonna change. We don't know whether there are hurricanes. We don't know whether constitutional officers will have needs. There's a lot of unanswered questions at this point. It sounds as though that, that we vetted this million dollars.
We have not vetted any. These are the numbers they gave us.
These are the numbers we gave, okay.
They gave us these numbers. Right, for testing, for community testing of COVID, which we partnered with them. Remember when we opened up all the additional testing facilities? Well, we, we did it through partnerships with Health First and with parish. And so we asked them, what were all your costs for community testing?
So we've partnered with them, but we have not yet vetted these numbers, correct?
No.
Okay. Sorry, sorry for my misunderstanding.
Why don't we just wait to approve anything for the hospitals?
I, I have no problem with that.
Until the next meeting?
See when everything comes in with some numbers.
I mean, I, I don't think they're at risk of, of financial ruin, any of the hospitals by waiting a couple of weeks. The, the other thing, and I'll be the mean guy to say it, and it actually would negatively impact my district perhaps more so than others. I'd like to know where they're headquartered, because I know that there's one hospital that's within walking distance of my house, that's not headquartered locally. And frankly, if an out-of-state company takes a beating financially so that we can, we can keep the money flushing Brevard, I'd much prefer to see it with systems that are based in Brevard. So I, you know, I, I would assume parish and Health First are based here in Brevard. I know that Stewart, unless I'm mistaken, is based out of state.
Well, yeah, and Stewart is a private hospital system, and so they, they're each a different type. One is a nonprofit, one is a, you know, semi-governmental, I guess. You know, parish was, through state statute was, you know, formulated and they have, so there are three different types of, of systems. We, you know, this staff is just trying to be responsive to the board in terms of, you said, look at the three hospital systems, and we were trying to gather information as, of what they said their unreimbursed expenses. I will tell you, it won't happen in a couple of weeks. It's gonna be a significant period of time before we're able to get the specific documentation, have it vetted, and then reach agreements with them, because I believe what the board's gonna be asking is, one, that they don't have, you know, these expenses have to be unreimbursed currently or won't be reimbursed, otherwise there'll be a clawback for that if they're reimbursed, or if, you know, if the treasury comes back and says they're not eligible expenses, which.
I, I worry more even if they're reimbursable, because the fact is, if they can get the money elsewhere, let them get it from elsewhere. But if they know they're getting it from us, and if they get reimbursed a second time, that we'll just claw it back, they won't even bother filling out a sheet. So I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm a little skeptical about handing it over. I understand we have a huge pot of money, but we need to make it go as far as we possibly can.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think they're probably in a risk of getting most of it reimbursed. They'll get a lot of it. I just, I just know that they're just so important in, in what we have going on. So even if we just say, look, just use that pot and we figure it all out later, I just didn't want it to go above this amount of money right now, because I think they could probably utilize a big chunk of it. So however you guys wanna frame it, or even if we need to say anything, but Frank, I think you've done some good number work here as far as that. But I think hospitals and the medical field's important to get y'all reimbursed.
Of course.
For what you're spending out of pocket, because you don't have a choice.
Yeah, I'm just not inclined to do it today. I'm sorry. If I have to vote, I mean, whether it's one, two, or three, I'm not, I'm not inclined to do it today.
I'm, I'm fine. He's got it allocated already, so I just feel bad for him too.
No, I, I'm with you.
Chair, a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The vote we had for Ian's item, we're gonna call the vote for that item, for his three topics.
Yes. Can we go back to that?
We have a motion and a second. You just.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we go back to that? Are y'all all right with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, any further discussion? Can we bring that slide up again?
That's all we do. The last slide.
I need to vote against it.
Yeah, there was a, there was a three bullet slide with a header.
Last one.
Let's keep going there. No, that's not it. It was, there were three bullets. There it is. Yep, 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 thanks.
So Smith made the motion and read a second there.
Correct, correct, correct. All right, any further discussion on this? I know that we had a, a bunch of discussion, but we do have a motion, we do have a second, so I'm gonna call the question if there's no further discussion. None? Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor of supporting the three items under the requested board action slide, the three bullet items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously? All right, I apologize. Let's see if we can get back forward to the last slide. Thank you all.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, it has been a long meeting, hasn't it?
Yes, it has.
Is that it? End of slides?
That's it. We're ready to go to the next agenda item.
All right, so we've got, let's see. CARES Act funding for economic support programs. All right, I have a slew of speaker cards, not nearly as many. This is a smaller slew than we had previously. We've got twenty on this one.
It might be an advantage for us to have discussion first before people come up, because at least I'll know what parameters y'all are, are wanting to go on with this for small businesses.
I'll jump in if you want. I don't mind being the first, see if the water's cold or not. Okay, so one of the, one of the items, a couple of the items that I've been looking at, one of them much more so than another, with Career Source Brevard, I do think that there's a huge potential advantage in allocating some reasonable amount of money to them. I think we can do it actually with them and with potentially also the chambers to, on a trial basis, to see how much it ends up costing per individual that gets placed with each of the organizations, so that we can say, okay, the ROI with Career Source is X, the ROI with one or more chambers is Y. So for allocating purposes in the future, we get more, more bang from the buck continuing one direction or the other. The initial proposal from Career Source that they put in was for seven hundred and fifty thousand. I worked with them quite a bit. I know that staff worked with them as well, to try to keep the administrative costs as low as possible. I think they've done a good job doing that. I think, you know, it certainly is, is something that would be impactful to those folks that are placed in jobs that otherwise wouldn't be, or that would take longer to get jobs. My philosophy with it, just in real short, is I would much rather pay to have someone put in a gainful occupation, so that they're able to pay their ongoing expenses from here on out, than to pay their mortgage or their, their rent for longer than, than need be. The fact is, we can't do that past the end of the year, and the money may run out at some point, even, you know, and if it doesn't, like I said, the end of the year, that's it. So we need to have something that's more long-term geared. I think getting people placed in jobs certainly would be a good way of going about it. And I, I certainly would rather spend the same amount of money getting someone placed than simply paying off their expenses for the meanwhile. So that's, you know, that's one program I intend to support. The, the other item that I intend to support, now, I, I alluded to the chamber program. I, I certainly am supportive, at least in concept of allocating them some money as well. BCSO has put in a, a request. I think that their request is reasonable. If staff is of the opinion that we're not gonna have concerns with the treasury clawing it back, you know, certainly I would be inclined to support that as well.
None of that has been vetted.
None of it's been vetted yet?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, if, if y'all want, I, I see Doug Waller, the chief deputy, is here as well.
There are several items that he submitted, that they've submitted. We've already got it planned in, but there, you know, there's one or two items they've asked us to look at, and whether or not that would be eligible under the CARES, I think, is very questionable, but we will do everything we can to see if, you know, if it can qualify, we will clearly do that. But I think it's the same kind of thing of, you know, being careful that, you know, there has to be a clawback, and, and even though it's gonna be the board's dollars, you know, that you want to have a, I, I believe, a degree of confidence that.
Yes, sir.
We get through an audit with whatever's submitted.
Yeah, and again, I, I think, you know, at least from looking at it, it seems like they're reasonable expenses, but that doesn't mean that I'm vetting it for what you're vetting it for. I'm vetting it to, to see if it looks like it's reasonable, not whether it complies or doesn't comply with the requirements. So obviously, I'm gonna rely on, on staff to do that, as they've, as they've done with a lot of the other items. But, you know, I, I do see Chief Deputy Waller is here, so if he'd like to come up and, and say a few words, I'd certainly love to hear. I know he's been extremely patient as well.
This is for the small business?
This is, yeah, I think this was on this item, right?
Small business.
Or am I, am I moving you ahead a little bit?
I, I don't know, but I'll take.
Let's, yeah, let's, let's get you the opportunity. I know you've been here a long, long time.
He's been here so long, he was in high school when he got here.
Yeah.
I, just one promise, it's my thirtieth wedding anniversary tonight. My wife thinks I'm out fighting crime if she knows I was having fun with everybody here tonight.
All right, let's get the camera off of him.
I think I ruined it, so. Just a few things, so we've been working very closely with Frank and his very talented staff. They've been absolutely fantastic, and what he said is, is completely accurate. We have submitted some recommendations that we believe will fit under the, the CARES Act. We have no idea at this time if they will, because of the vetting process, but we have been working closely with him. There was one that I did include when I sent the, the recommendation, see you all the last couple there, actually sheriff had sent to you, but I drafted for him. And it related to a project called Mutual Link. It's actually a platform. This is a recommendation just for staff to review and see if it would be eligible, but it's a very valuable tool. We used it and we researched it for the school board, and we have been contracted to provide the district security for the school board. And this platform gives us the ability to communicate either by computer, radio, cell phone, audio and video simul, instantaneously with every single campus on, in Brevard County. And it, as a first responder, we respond in the blind for the most part. We have no idea what we are heading to. The information is usually inaccurate or, inaccurate or delayed. And this platform, as we've suggested for, for staff to consider, for the county to look at, would allow us, not just us as the sheriff's office, but us as county leadership, to be able to communicate instantaneously with the hospitals, with the port, with the airport, with all law enforcement, with all fire rescue. An example would be the shooting at Jess Parish several years ago. When we responded with TPD, we had absolutely no idea where the active shooter was. We would have the ability through this platform to be able to access their security cameras and actually, as we're responding, get real-time information and see where that subject was. So I just wanted to be able to give a short presentation on, on that one, because that's one I threw in there. That's not an actual recommendation from the sheriff's office, a recommendation from us for staff to consider and look at. The other items, you know, I, of course, I feel very confident that they'll be eligible, but they have not been vetted yet, and we look forward to the vetting process.
I appreciate it. I also appreciate your and the sheriffs, and also Mike Karadopoulos having reached out to me in advance on the items. It certainly put me in a better, better spot in terms of understanding what they were and what the requests were.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Please.
And we talked about this a little bit. I guess your office does contact tracing for deputies that may or may not be exposed?
We provide contact tracing for every one of our employees who are suspected of either an interaction with somebody as tested positive.
More of the research is coming out, is pointing out that this is a direct way to limit the spread of, of COVID.
That's correct.
If you have expertise, would you have the manpower to take more of a responsibility that would go outside? I, I can't imagine that that would fall outside of the COVID CARES Act parameters, should you take a, a larger role with that?
Agreed. It's a difficult process, and to say, do we have the adequate resources, yes and no. We're in a new world, and as a result, court service deputies, jail deputies, and we're doing different things with different people that normally we would not be doing. We do have the resources available to assist in that. I do believe it's very important, the sheriff believes it's very important, that trace research gives us the, the ability to reach out and contact anyone who does not know they may be a possible spreader at that point in time, and I think it's been very valuable. So that is part of some of the suggestions that we have presented to county staff.
Yeah, we, we, I, I, and I asked the wrong question about the resources. Do you have the, the intelligence, the backing to it? Apparently, we have ninety-five million dollars in resources to help you out and to, to facilitate a closing of, or winding down of COVID.
Yes.
Do you have the expertise? And we have the research, and we have the resources, maybe we could put those together and help solve this in a, in a quicker fashion.
Yeah, I believe, I believe, I'm confident in our ability that we've done so far that we'd be able to assist either the health department, or what other agency might require our assistance to do some of these trace, trace contacts.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, not for him.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate, I'm sorry for the wait.
Oh, it's all right. I just remember, I'm working, I'm out. Fighting crime.
We'll vouch for you, sir.
Not having fun here.
Make your anniversary.
All right.
You got our flowers, right?
Thank you all. I did flowers.
As I say, if you didn't, you better go now.
I just want to throw this out, it's twenty to six right now, and I don't know about you guys, but I don't, I'm not gonna be much good getting the details past six-thirty. I, I think we probably should have done this first, because it was the agenda item.
Yes, we should have.
With people showing up, but I, I, from you guys, what are we expecting to get out of this tonight? Are we, are we trying to give them overall overview of where we're wanting to go with this? We're not gonna come to any definite decisions tonight, for sure, but he's got a stack of cards there also. But he's got a stack of cards there also.
Yeah.
So I just thought I would just be the elephant in the room here right now, or bring it up and see where you guys want to end up with this. So maybe we can work towards where we're wanting to be, so that we're not going down a bunch of rabbit trails tonight. Just a thought.
Well, Mr. Sheriff, I'm on, I'm in the same belief as the chairman that I feel comfortable allocating, as we did, the $4 million for direct food assistance and expediting as much as we can for the constitutional officers to be run through Tetra Tech to make sure that those meet and continue the vetting process of the various entities that put it forward. But I think we're into too much when we get into, if we're at a 6:30 deadline, discussing not only the amount that would go to small businesses, but nonprofits. And then there's a secondary level of that, who's going to be administering that, and the efficacy of all that good nonsense. So that's, I thought that that would be even longer than what the masks would be, so.
So what do you all want to do? Because I've got 20 cards. And now a few of them may have walked out, I don't know, in this time. Do you want to hear from the public, or do you want to have a discussion? I mean, really, how do you want to handle it?
I don't know.
Well, let's go, let's see what we have card-wise. Let's go with that, if there's ambiguity. Because I don't want to keep anyone waiting any longer. I think we've tried to give them as much as we can by having a little discussion on the front end so they can tailor their comments accordingly. But let's go for that. All right, so we'll start up, just in order here. I'll give folks a heads up in terms of where they're likely to be. So Mark Wagner from Viera is first, then Beverly Squire Wiggins is second, followed by Richard Richmond from Melbourne, followed by Brandy Christofully from Merritt Island, followed by Courtney Barker from Satellite Beach, and then Renee and Cordell Day. And I'll give you some more after that. Let's start up if we could. So we've got Mark Wagner first up on the deck. And I wouldn't blame him if he fell asleep during the long discussion here. Welcome, sir.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you. We really appreciate it. As a small business owner, I've owned Miami Subs Grill Restaurants and now work with tons of restaurants in the Brevard County and outlying areas. They are severely impacted. If any business that you've run, especially a paint spraying place that painted cars, and you lost 50% of your business or greater, some are as much as 85% loss in revenue during this COVID shutdown. So we need to look at keeping the money local, hyper-local, just like you were talking about. Why give it to a large corporation? Give it to the franchisees, give it to the restaurant owners to keep businesses solvent. Because right now, they're having to lay off their staff. Now the PPE is completely extinguished, so they don't have any of that money, and they can't reapply for it. So all of a sudden now, their employees are having to go back because they just reshut down because of this new events that have come about. So we need to try to allocate for businesses, because that money spins around in our economy about six times. And so by saving the money or getting them cash flow during these pivotal times is, I think, extremely important for any of the small businesses. And it's not just restaurants, but a lot of our bigger corporations were able to work remotely. So you have dry cleaners, you've got a lot of the service businesses that service other businesses that were shut down. Those have been impacted severely also. So we can't sit back and say, hey, we need to spend this money. Like you stated before, we don't need to spend it on large corporations that are going to get it outside of our realm. We need to keep it here, in Brevard, circling throughout Brevard, so other people don't have to come and pay for rent or their own personal things they have a job to be able to go to, and businesses that can feed everybody. Because I know I used to feed a lot of the people from the county and from the sheriff's office. We did a ton of it, and the Brevard Zoo. So thank you for your time, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your patience. All right, next up, we have Beverly Squire Wiggins from Palm Bay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
I'll just read what I said, but I was encouraged when you, Chair, mentioned Career Source and the Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to ask each of you to consider the plight of the chamber, who, like our business community, are significantly impacted by these unprecedented events happening globally. As our Brevard County businesses struggle in so many ways financially, what is happening to them drastically is impacting our chambers too. I'm here to say, we, the business community, need our chambers to keep providing their much-needed business support. The chambers are helping businesses to navigate what can only be described as uncharted territory with the light of hope for many businesses. It is the business community dollars that fuel the chamber through their membership dollars. These dollars enable the chambers to provide the essential services our businesses need right now. So my ask is, will you consider setting aside funds that our chambers can utilize to enable them to sustain themselves through this pandemic? Our chambers need us right now to stand with them as they have proudly stood with the Brevard community for decades. I had a long speech, but I've cut it down.
That's okay.
Brevard County and each city has also used our chamber, the established platforms that they have, to reach and communicate with its messaging. So I'm saying that the community has used a chamber as a platform for a rate and has connected with large, midsize, and small businesses. That the community, which includes governors, elected officials, law enforcement, fire departments, sheriff departments, the cities themselves, nonprofits, and other organizations, have all used the platform of the chamber. Well, our chamber needs the community now. Our chamber is hurting just as much. Have I finished? Have I gone?
Ma'am, I apologize. Your accent is so pleasant, and you've been so patient. I hate to cut you off at all, but I appreciate your waiting. The short answer, I can't have the interaction with everyone, but the short answer is yes, I am willing to consider that, provided that it's something that would qualify for us to use the funds. All right, next up, we have Richard Richmond from Melbourne. And I understand from staff, we have about three-quarters of the folks that filled out the cards for this item still here. So we may have some that are not. Well, we definitely have some that are not. All right, last call for Richard Richmond. Okay, Brandy Christofully from Merritt Island. All right, going once, going twice, Brandy Christofully. Oh, there you are.
Hi.
Welcome.
Commissioners, thank you for letting me come. I am the president and founder of Life Free Captured, and we rescue human trafficking victims, and then we place them in safe homes. But right now, we're working with law enforcement, with Sheriff Ivy. I'm also on a task force for human trafficking. But we have no place to put our victims here in Brevard County. So what we're trying to do is, when we rescue them, we try to find safe places. And we're taking them and putting them in areas where no one can find them. But one case that we had had COVID, so that infected the other people in the homes. Then another case, we had a girl that left and we couldn't find her. We are in need to help us get our safe home. We have a staff of about 42 people, a good core group. We're working together in the community, but since the shutdown, we cannot raise funds. We would like to have some help to try to get us into some safe homes. And we have some funds that we have already raised, but the rest of the monies that we need because of the shutdown, we cannot go any further. And listening to your program, it might be that it fits into one of your categories, so that would come under health and safety. And we ask you if you would just consider talking to us more and knowing what we're doing and being able maybe to help us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I don't know, Mr. Abate, if that's something that would fall under revenue replacement and be an issue, or if there's a possibility, but obviously, we'll look at anything that's proposed. All right, next up, we have Courtney Barker from City of Satellite Beach.
She's not here.
Oh, she's not, thank you. All right, in that case, Renee and Cordell Day from Titusville. No?
He's not here either.
Uh-oh. All right, let's, I'll give you the next few in the lineup here, just to kind of get people ready. Next up, we'll have Sophia Mazo from Melbourne, Joseph McNeil from Melbourne, Tracy Straterd from Palm Bay, and then Laura Ann Prey from Titusville. So let's start up with Sophia Mazo or Mazo. Welcome.
Hi. I'm here to advocate on behalf of many voices within my community, all of which that have been waiting for over four hours for an agenda item this was supposed to start with. I am here, like I said, as an advocate, a teacher, a godmother, and a sure product of Brevard County. And I do not feel safe here. If the virus has taught us anything, it's that we seriously lack transparency and accountability in our leadership. It's time those we start trusting to protect us, including you, elected officials, start doing just that. Brevard has granted over $100 million in CARES Act funding. Yet barely any of the over $60 million that you guys have already allocated has actually been put into action. If you're even lucky enough to qualify to receive part of that 4.4 million for individual assistance, the aid goes directly to your creditor. Now, we're really being told this is all our fault, and that the best thing to do is give almost $40 million to businesses? People are suffering. I don't know how to fix the problem we're facing. That's why I don't have your job. I do know there is a problem, and there's a deep injustice. Do better. Put your people over profits. Divest from policing us and invest in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Joseph McNeil from Melbourne. Welcome, Mr. McNeil.
Again, my name is Joseph McNeil, and I represent the American Legion Post 191 in Melbourne. Because of the epidemic, we have had some, and because of the shutdown, but primarily the 300-plus members that we have have been suffering to maintain the post and to maintain the ability to pay the mortgage note, the ability to pay the utility bills, and so on. Being a 501(c)(19), we are asking that you consider whatever assistance can be rendered to us to help maintain our building. Because we foresee that if we don't get some type of help, we're going to lose the building to the mortgage company. And we don't want to see that happen. As I stated, we have 300-plus members collectively. And with the second closing, it is difficult for us to see where we're going to be able to maintain. We are still trying to do things like making little bake sales or whatever the case may be to pay at least the utility bills. But it's still difficult, because we can't get the communications out like we do. We tried on social media, whatever the case may be, but it's still difficult for us to. And we are just asking if there's any way possible to consider a 501(c)(3)(19), which is nonprofit, and it will help those soldiers or military personnel who have gone on and served our country to help us maintain our facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have Tracy Straterd from Palm Bay. That microphone's probably shiny by now.
Hi.
Welcome.
How are you? Good afternoon. Actually, it's probably early evening, right? I am honored to be standing before you, representing small businesses here in Brevard County. Thank you for entertaining these grants. My name is Tracy Straterd. I'm the chairwoman of the Greater Palm Bay Chamber of Commerce. I'm the founder and CEO of EverythingBrevard.com magazine and website. I have lived in Brevard for the last 35 years and have championed small business success since 1990, when I launched my first business. My business is currently a member of all four chambers of commerce. What I enjoy most about my relationship with the chambers is the opportunity to connect, learn, grow, and serve with other like-minded business professionals. The chambers have been a longstanding and reliable resource for our business community. Collectively, the chambers serve over 3,000 businesses and nearly 100,000 employees. I'm proud to be a part of what the chambers have accomplished during this unprecedented time. Let me share a few highlights. The chamber, the Palm Bay Chamber of Commerce has provided informational videos to its members and business community via Facebook. 80% of viewers were non-chamber members, meaning this was a huge outreach to the community at large. People trust the chambers. The Greater Palm Bay Chamber also launched a back-to-business celebration, interviewing 21 businesses, sharing their stories on how they're keeping their people safe and their customers safe, and sharing stories of success through this process. One of our newest trustee members at the chamber joined, stating, "If I had not gotten the information provided in the chamber's webinar on the bridge loan, PPP, and EIDL programs, when I did as thoroughly as I did, I'm really not sure where my business would be today." Communication is key. My final thought, we know that the fastest way to recover is to put people back to work or keep them working. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. All right, the next several we'll have in the lineup are Laura Ann Prey from Titusville, Jim McKnight from Cocoa Beach, Todd Bakriva from Melbourne Regional Chamber, looks like he's representing, then Adam Copenhagen from Rockledge, and then I'll give you all some more. Ms. Prey?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
The first, most important thing that I want to say is, a chamber's mission and purpose is to help small businesses succeed. As mentioned previously, the best pathway forward to minimize rental supplements and other programs is to get businesses back on their feet and employees working. This is what chambers do every day. At the onset of the pandemic, the four chambers in Brevard established a countywide coalition of business organizations, the Brevard County Business Community COVID-19 Response Team, to help ensure messaging was consistent to our community and that we were working together more efficiently rather than competing with one another. Together, they produced six webinars with presentations from the SBA and the Small Business Development Center. They also held sessions with local subject matter experts to share information on best practices. They held sessions with the Florida Chamber of Commerce on Florida's Road to Recovery, and then local leaders on Brevard's Road to Recovery. These webinars have continued in partnership with WeVenture and are now held bi-weekly on a variety of topics. All of these presentations were provided at no cost to any businesses or members in our community. This was not a member-only event, and you were allowed to participate regardless of your association with any of the organizations. The sessions are recorded and are shared continually. Each organization has received numerous testimonials from local businesses that they would not have known what to do without these webinars. All four of the chambers have put up specific COVID information pages on their website to update as it becomes available. They have done numerous broadcasts on social media. At the Titusville Chamber, we've built a restaurant page, as well as distributing 30,000 cloth face masks to local businesses, and have also participated, created a Take the Pledge campaign to highlight the measures that small businesses are taking to ensure the safety of their employees and their customers. Again, that's open to all programs or all businesses, regardless of their membership. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. All right, next we've got Jim McKnight from Cocoa Beach.
I'm the younger blonder Jim McKnight. Sorry about that. Believe it or not, he has another commission meeting to go to, probably to talk about face masks he wanted me to joke about.
Let me guess, Jennifer Sugarman, not from Cocoa Beach?
What? Yes, Jennifer Sugarman, president and CEO of the Cocoa Beach Regional Chamber of Commerce, citizen of Satellite Beach. And I will read through this quickly. I know we've got two minutes. As many of my counterparts already alluded to, the Cocoa Beach Chamber of Commerce joined several other Brevard business groups from the Brevard business to form, rather, the Brevard Business Community COVID-19 Response Team back in March. Part of this group's approach and intent was to become a one-stop shop for hurting businesses in Brevard to find resources. One thing that we have learned as a chamber from surveying, and also our one-on-one communication with all 1,500 of our business partners, was that some were not eligible for assistance through the PPP or the EIDL, and many were interested in how the county could assist them as the virus continues to have devastating impacts on our economy. Amongst the four chambers of commerce in Brevard, we represent over 3,000 businesses that span across very diverse business sectors. The chambers being a 501(c)(6) nonprofit, and our chamber in particular, also housing a 501(c)(3), we are sensitive to the needs of our over 160 nonprofit business partners. While having an option for them by way of supporting their PPE efforts is welcomed and nice, a nonprofit's business expenses echo a for-profit business by way of payroll, rent, utilities, mortgages, and more. The chamber urges you not to forget the nonprofits in Brevard, as well as our home-based businesses. As a chamber with a large base of hospitality and tourism partners, a sector among the hardest hit by the effects of COVID-19, we would also like to stress the importance of supporting our restaurants, bars, hotels, and attractions through this time. I feel it's important to touch on all chambers' rainy day funds and reserves as well. Just like small businesses, we also have reserves. These are by far and away largely used for hurricane relief, amongst other disasters we could not plan for. COVID-19 has caused the chamber and most of its small business partners to entirely redo how we conduct business. Furthermore, when businesses come back, it's in a limited capacity. This is certainly above and beyond anything we could have planned for. I'm running out of time, but we certainly appreciate the commission's consideration of small business assistance, and as a chamber that services 80% 1 to 5 employees, we certainly hope that you will be in favor of some sort of grant program. We know the Small Business Task Force is going to present on that. We are in favor of it. We're mindful of what our community needs by way of small businesses. And again, thank you for what you do. You're here late. I'm sure you'll be here late again another time. It's a thankless job. Thank you for what you do and for what you're putting on the table for small businesses. They need you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Todd Bakriva.
Commissioners?
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Could you speak up just a little bit, sir?
Sure, sure.
Thanks. Thanks.
I'm Todd Pocriva, representing the Melbourne Regional Chamber of Commerce this evening. I'm the Chairman of the Board of Directors this year for the Melbourne Chamber. The chambers of commerce in Brevard have been hit just as hard as many others in the community. And as you've already heard, we were unfortunately left out of the PPP program. The Melbourne Regional Chamber shares the same challenges as our counterparts. We have experienced a 45% decrease in projected revenue and anticipate that at the end of the year, membership revenue will be down at least 30%. As a chamber, we took steps to ensure our 95-year-old organization's viability and made proactive operational decisions, including reducing staff by 50%, across-the-board pay cuts to those that remain, and a reduction in monthly overhead. We immediately revised our strategies and formulated concrete action plans to advocate and help drive the recovery of the region. All the Brevard County chambers led the way, worked diligently to provide timely guidance and assistance to all businesses in the community, whether they were members or not. We all provided relevant and valuable resources that offered strategies and opportunities, formed strong partnerships and alliances to streamline offerings and messaging, cohesively respond to requests from the community, and the Melbourne Regional Chamber partnered with the City of Melbourne and others on the Back in Business campaign and developed a Staycation campaign to help restart the Space Coast economy. In addition, due to the virtual program we offered and the partnerships we initiated with the SBA, WeVenture, and the banking industry throughout the community, we were able to help hundreds of businesses obtain information and critical resources to keep them afloat. I'd be remiss if I didn't touch on the powerful collective impact of all the businesses we represent, large and small, like L3 Harris Health First, North of Grumman, the small businesses like Absolute Accounting, Evergreen Lawn Care, and many others. We provide a forum for these companies to strategically plan for the Space Coast community growing into the future. Now more than ever, the chamber's values evident. We've all played a pivotal role in assisting members of the business community move toward recovery and be a driving force in creating an environment in which business and community thrives. In conclusion, commissioners, we're asking you to consider a direct allocation to each of the four chambers in the county. If we're to ensure the long-term sustainability of our organizations and our region and be a resource to our members in the community, we need your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, Adam Copenhagen, then we'll have Stuart Borton from Malabar, Geraldine Blanchard from Melbourne, Keith Gie from Melbourne, Pam Derschka from Titusville, and then a couple after that. All right, Adam Copenhagen from Rockledge.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, commissioners.
If you could just speak a little bit up. I'm not going to ask you to take your mask off. If you want, you're certainly welcome to, but if you would just speak up, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. As others have mentioned, thank you for your time. I'm here as a local citizen, a father, and a business owner. I live in the city of Rockledge, and I belong to three of the four chambers. Actually, was in the process of joining the fourth when COVID kind of set us back a little. So needless to say, I support the chambers of commerce, and I believe that they represent thousands of businesses, the vast majority of which are for-profit, small-to-medium-sized, locally-owned businesses. A lot of those are suffering, as you've heard this evening. And what I'm here to ask is that not only would you include the chambers of commerce in an allocation of funds so that they can continue the work that they've done here in Brevard County, but that you would utilize their presidents, their staff, and their Board of Directors' expertise to not only facilitate the processes for small-to-medium-sized businesses for these funds, but also to be a hub for business for the future, as it has been in the case of the Melbourne Chamber for the last 95 years. So what I'm asking again is that you would consider supporting not only the four chambers of commerce, but also utilize their expertise and their staff to facilitate some of the processes of this fund allocation with small-to-medium-sized businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate your patience. All right, Stuart Borton from Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name's Stuart Borton. I'm from Yellow Doll Cafe. I'm here in support of the Palm Bay Chamber and all the chambers in Brevard County. As a past chair, I know what the chambers do for individual businesses. They go above and beyond. Matter of fact, I've just recently taken part in two different operations, one with the Melbourne Chamber, that Staycation one, and then one with Palm Bay Chamber, back-to-business. And both of them have been a big help with our business right now and great impact. The amount of money that you could, if you're able to give to the chamber, they have staff too, and a lot of their staff is unemployed right now because they can't afford to bring them back. Businesses like mine can't pay, or many of the businesses can't pay their dues right now, and the chamber does need funds to keep their staff going. With bringing them back, their staff back, they will be able to actually do more outreach to the businesses to help us develop what we're doing and make us flourish and help us bring more of our staff back. As far as the restaurants go and hotels, bars, an idea that I would like to put out there is, I would like you to think about this, is to help restaurants, bars, and hotels to develop outdoor areas, and maybe waive permits or help them with the building of their outdoor areas so that we can seat more people and do it in a more safe manner by being outdoors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And your restaurant's great, by the way. All right, next up, Geraldine Blanchard in Melbourne.
Good evening. Yes, I'm Geraldine Blanchard from Global Tours and Travel. I'm the owner for the past 25 years. But I don't need to reiterate everything that has been said about the chamber. I'm here as the cheerleader of the chambers because I remember when I came here 25 years ago, not knowing us all, came from the Middle East with my husband to settle here. I remember walking to the chamber, and it's because of the chamber that I am here 25 years later, and I'm convinced of that, for the support that they've given us throughout the years. And also, you know that the small businesses are the backbone of the community, and because of my agency, I was able to support four or five families throughout the years. So we are here to tell you, we are families. We live here, husbands, wives, children of the community. We need your help because obviously the chamber's suffering just like I am. I'm a travel agent on hold right now, as you can well imagine. So without the chamber, I don't know where I would be because despite that, they give us the supporting lifeline, I call it, you know, that we can still stay staying power until, you know, the community reopens, until travel reopens, and I'll be there, of course, thanks to the chambers. So I cannot tell you enough, I'm happy, I know that I'm under a lot of, you know, short time, but believe us when we tell you that the chamber is a necessity in our community, and we need to make every effort that we, you keep us, you keep the chambers, you know, on the forefront and not put in the back burner. We all need you. And I know it's late, and I know you all want to go home, so I'll stop now. But don't forget, when you want to travel without a travel agent, you're on your own, so I'll put in my two cents that Global Tours and Travel is alive and well, thanks to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. All right, Keith Gie from Melbourne? Oh, no. Uh-oh. All right, let's try Pam Derschka from Titusville.
She's gone as well.
All right, thank you. All right, let's try, next couple, we have Jennifer Metz from Cocoa Beach.
She's here.
All right, we got one.
Hi there, how are you?
Great, thank you for coming. Thank you for your patience.
You know, I was the third person in the room, and I'm almost last to talk because I didn't think I'd have to talk today, but we'll try this.
I promise we'll listen.
Okay. So thank you for the chance to talk to you guys. I represent, my husband and I, we own a small business in downtown Cocoa Beach. We relocated here from California about three years ago and saw this great opportunity for helping enhance downtown Cocoa Beach. We bought a building, we renovated an old dive bar and made it into a beautiful bar and lounge. And as you know, bars were closed on March. We actually opened our doors in July of last year, so we weren't open a full year, closed in March, and then we were closed for nearly three months, opened for three weeks, and now we're closed again. What I can tell you is our employees have suffered an immense amount, especially with the unemployment issues, et cetera. I think I had one employee who never did get benefits. We came back, and now he's got to reapply. It's kind of horrifying. But I wanted to kind of speak to not really taking for granted that little businesses like ours really do contribute to the society, the community we're in, and to taxes and revenues that are happening throughout the county. And to suppose that we're just going to be able to sort of sit idly by and not have any expenditures is kind of unrealistic. It costs us almost as much to stay closed as it does to be open. And with no revenue, of course, that's going to be more and more difficult for us to reopen. So we are requesting you to consider putting money aside for the small businesses in Brevard, especially the really tiny ones like us. I mean, we have nine employees, but to help us keep the ability to put those people back to work. They want to come back to work, we want to put them back to work. And just a side note, one of the commissioners had said earlier, you know, it's not like, you know, their business can't just close if they aren't getting the business. The reality is, all of us want to be open. We want to be doing the job that we can do, and we want to get the help that hopefully this Cares money will give us.
Thank you. Before you go, why don't you give your restaurant a plug?
It's Napa Beach Bubbles Bar, and we're not a restaurant. We only do craft cocktails. Really good craft cocktails. I think probably the best old-fashioned in Brevard County, as well as beautiful wines from California West Coast, and we, Bubbles is in the names because I'm a Bubbles girl, sparkling wines, and really awesome craft beers.
I'm going to give it a shot. And I know the next speaker, if he's still there, is not going to mind me giving you a couple extra seconds for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mayor Malik from Cocoa Beach? No? Did we scare him off?
Yeah, he's gone.
All right, I believe that's it, as far as cards go. So what do you all want to do?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Tabia?
I think it's far too much to go into small business. However, there is something on page four of four, and that is a relatively minor expense of $500,000. It's whether to establish a small business PPE support program. I don't think that that really, you know, requires all that much discussion, but that it looks like each kit would contain 200 disposal masks, cloth masks, rubber gloves, sanitizers.
I'll second your motion.
So I would make a motion.
Sounds like you made a motion.
Sorry, there you go.
All right, he made a motion. I second it. Any discussion on his motion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Mr. Abate, are we in a point at this time with respect to the proposal from Career Source Brevard that we can vote on that, or do you still need some time to go through?
No, no, that's, that proposal is attached to the agenda, and that is the Stopgap Program, which is right above the one that you just did, which is the third program option that was given.
Yeah, and that's, again, that's a $750,000 allocation with the idea being that we'll see how they do with respect to that. I think they've done everything they can to trim the administrative costs. I've talked to more than one of their staff members, some a couple times a day, some, you know, every other day, but I know they've done a lot of work on that. I've done a good amount of work trying to work with them, and staff has worked with them as well to tweak the initial proposal to what's in there now. So if someone wants to make a motion on that, I would certainly be happy to second.
So.
All right, a motion from Commissioner Smith. I'll go ahead and second it. Mr. Pritchett's looking confused.
Yeah, I don't know what they trimmed it to, I'm sorry, but the last one that I saw, their administrative costs were really high.
Yeah, I think they were trimmed about...
Then my other question is, is what's the money going to be utilized for? Because I need to know if it's going to go to doing what, with keeping small businesses afloat? Because last time I heard too, it was for some training and stuff, and I don't think that's within the personalities. I think we're going to have to have a little discussion on this.
Mr. Abate, I see you kind of fidgeting, if you would.
Yeah, this would not be training. This would be for replacing employees. I believe they amended the agreement. It's for replacing employees who have either been laid off or furloughed, just like the prior business owner. So it would be for those businesses that still have that situation in place, that they would be identifying the businesses that had that and either going back to those employees and paying, using these funds to pay for that, or if those employees were no longer available, to go to their sources to use the outside temporary agency that would bring in a replacement employee for a period of time up to four months. So that's what this would be doing.
Are we giving the money to the businesses and to pay for the employee cost?
They would not be, no, they would be actually, they would be paying for the employees directly, not giving the money to the businesses, as I understand it.
So they're going to be paying, paid the salaries of the employee to go work for these companies?
Well, they would actually be paying the third-party employer, excuse me, they would be paying the third-party...
The staffing agency?
Temporary agency.
Yeah, and the short of it is, I know that their focus in terms of what they're looking to prioritize is getting people that have been displaced or substantially underemployed as a result of COVID, in businesses that lost their workers as a result of COVID. So you're kind of getting two birds with one stone with that sort of an approach.
Hey, it's funny, your head and this went off because this is one of my biggest heartburn.
Uh-oh.
So whatever you want to do, I'm probably not ready for Career Source, but...
Yeah, well, we'll see. I mean, I'd certainly like to see if we have the votes today. If we don't, then we can always readdress it when you're, you know, when you're more comfortable. We have a motion for Commissioner Smith. I'll go ahead and second it. Any further discussion on it?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Tabia?
I'm pretty skeptical on some of these things. However, you know, this is a public-private partnership, and from the little research I did, the business must fall under chapter, what, 112 for transparency and ethics? So there is some recourse there. So I'm comfortable for voting for it at this time.
Appreciate it, sir.
As I say, my initial concern was the administrative costs, and I talked about that with Marcy today, and they're nominal compared to where, I guess, where they were in the program, and so they're not obligated beyond that. And the employer isn't if they're not able to get their business back up to speed, so.
Right, and I'll just tell you too, with respect to it, I don't, I don't think there's a problem with Brevard County performing certain functions that aren't in our normal repertoire, but Career Source, this is what they do. And the cost for them to do it, if you look at the cost where we'd do it in-house, I don't think we'd be any better off. We might pay the employees the same, a little more, a little less, that are doing the actual job function that Career Source would be doing, but the fact is, I think they can do it more expeditiously. I think that they can do it in a better way because that's what they do. That's all that they do. And the sad thing is, if you look at the funding that they've gotten from the state and from the feds, it's been pitiful with respect to coronavirus funds. So, you know, they're in a spot where they're trying to do everything they can, but their resources are so constrained. I think this will make a big difference for them and a lot of families that end up getting buoyed by having folks put in jobs, where many of them are going to continue on after this funding runs dry.
Part of this, I had a meeting with her yesterday, and she canceled her meeting on me.
Oh, no.
So I really, I'm sorry, guys, I just don't have the data, but if you've got enough and you're comfortable, you know, you guys can go through with it. But that's probably why I'm going to withhold on this right now, so.
Understood. All right, so we have a motion, a second. We've had some discussion. Any further discussion? Or may I call the question? Call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
All right. Well, actually, technically, it's a no, Commissioner Pritchett.
No.
All right, Commissioner Pritchett, the negative, otherwise passes 4-1. Anything else that anyone wants to address at this point? I think it's an interesting concept that's been proposed with respect to the nonprofits and the other 501(c's). I certainly would be open to it. I don't know where you all are at with it, but I think, you know, there's certain nonprofits and not-for-profits that perform really essential functions here in Brevard, and I would hate to cut them out of the equation as well. I'm not saying that we should start buoying every nonprofit that exists, but if it's something that otherwise, if they didn't exist, would fall in the county, for instance, you know, I don't want to fall, I don't want to allow a nonprofit or a not-for-profit in that sort of a category to fall through the cracks and not exist anymore, because we may be saving ourselves a few bucks now and shorting ourselves in the long run.
I agree, if they employ people and it's helping the economy, so.
They do.
So any further motions? I think we're going to make your 6:30 deadline.
Okay, I want to throw out a thought, though. We're going to have to spend a lot of time on this. We've got the small businesses grants we're trying to get out, and the chambers have applied for some funds. So just think about this. Maybe we give them the funds, and they're the ones that have to figure out which small businesses they're going to distribute it for. That way, they would kind of be earning the money. So just let them earn their, whatever funds we're going to get them by them helping do that legwork. Couldn't be just their members, and they would have to look at all the businesses. Just a thought.
I'll tell you, it's interesting. I actually was somewhat opposed to granting the chambers directly any amount of funding, and then I've actually spoken with them since I had that thought formulate, and they've done a really good job of convincing me to change my position on that. So I'll tell you, I would just say, if you're skeptical with respect to it, just give them a chance and talk with them. I think that they have some compelling arguments that at least are worth consideration. If you don't change your opinion, that's fine, but give them a shot.
Might be a way to...
It's only you should give us a shot, too.
Sure.
Explain the sanity of why it would not be the correct direction to go.
I promise, I will entertain...
I've got a whole list.
We'll let you go through the list.
We have a long meeting Tuesday next week.
All right, anything further? Gone once, gone twice?
Yeah, I would make one comment. I read today, if you're wearing a mask, you might want to keep it a while because there's another swine flu that is in China, of all places, imagine that, and it's been transferring from the swine, the pigs, to people for about two years now.
It's not from Wuhan now, is it?
No. And it's not going human-to-human yet, but the Chinese scientists are concerned that it may make that jump. But right now, it's only traveling from swines, pigs, to people, so...
Ending us on a happy note.
Yeah, just keep it on your radar.
Were you going to go through each one of us, like you do, like for every meeting?
Yeah, if you want, I can do that. I've got one item for board reports, but yeah, however you want to, let's maybe start with Commissioner Tabia, we'll just kind of go around the table.
Is it board reports?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Not this weekend, but the weekend previous, you may recall a Ponce de Leon statue that may be in the district. It got vandalized about murdering some native, which I don't support, obviously. Reason being is because he wasn't here to murder the folks, but that wasn't the issue. Let me tell you about the issue. It's a very positive one. Monday morning, Jim Leisenfeld was out there getting the paint off of that darn statue. And that's wonderful that we would have someone that high up the ranks, the assistant county manager, doing that. But what's even more amazing about that, it was his week off.
Oh, no.
So it was his week off. So I want to let you know the dedication of staff that we have, and that's way the heck down in Melbourne Beach. You know, that had to be a 30 or 40-minute drive for him on his time off to come help, you know, scrape paint off or do whatever they did to get paint off. So certainly want to talk about, you know, the silver lining on the storm, and we have a great staff here, and he didn't call. I mean, I just heard that Parks and Rec gave me a heads up that it happened, and I asked who was there, and, you know, Jim was there doing it. So he didn't ask for any credit, it just happened that he was there, and I greatly appreciate the dedication of him and the rest of our staff that go above and beyond, even on their times off. So thank you so much. Frank, you've chosen some really good folks to work for you.
That's awesome. Thanks, Jim. He's got the mask over his face because he's red.
I was just helping the parks guys.
All right, I think we kind of at least touched on this issue before, talking about all the social distancing in the meetings, and you heard some of the public on probably both sides of the issue that they had an issue. I want to somehow fix that. You know, we have, we allow our staff up here, we allow employees up here, understandably why, I mean, why they're here, but if the public can't face us when they talk, I think we need to change that. And I think we actually did pretty good when we were first coming, first allowed to come back to meetings, me and Commissioner Smith, we had permission to return back to meetings. We were all socially distanced, and I think we could probably pull that off in our old chambers. So that's just an idea. Frank, is that something logistically we could do?
Well, that's up to the board. I mean, we, you know, if you want to move back to that, the question is, do you want to maintain the six-feet social distancing? That's the only issue.
Of course, I mean...
I'd like to maintain more than that, frankly.
Well, the recommendation is six feet, so if the board desires, can we go back to some sense of normalcy if we're all safe and following guidelines?
Someone's going to have to be in the timeout box, that's the only issue, because there's no way to space them six feet out.
I don't care, I'll go in the timeout box. I liked it over there. Yeah, I'm fine with it. I'm sure...
I've been over there, it's fine.
We were fine.
It's like being in the bleachers.
Is it comfier?
I did get accused of not being at the meeting, though, at one point. They're like, people were like making really nasty comments because they couldn't see me on the dais, but maybe at the beginning of the meeting, you could point out that we're there, you know, I don't have a problem with that, but I would like the public to be able to come in and face their commission when they speak.
Put a little picture in your chair of your head.
You know what we can do? We can have a little cardboard mock-up with an arrow pointing off to the side so people know.
That's great. That's great.
Got anything else?
Not that I can think of. Thanks, staff, obviously, for throwing together all this stuff sort of last minute and for logistically handling today. I appreciate that, but that's probably all I have. And again, and my message to people, socially distance, wash your hands, wear your mask when you're going into places.
Don't touch your face.
Don't touch your face, if you can help it. And when you wear the mask, you're less likely to touch your face, but just be considerate of other people. I mean, it's not a partisan issue, never has been. You know, I don't care who says it or who accuses it. I don't care if people use it as a political platform, it's wrong, too. But I think we have a responsibility to one another to make sure that we're safe and that we're taking care of one another. And that's not just as a healthcare provider, that's as a human being, so...
I'll throw this out as a helpful hint for not touching your face. Early on in this process, I have a friend that's a doctor, was ready to scratch my face, I have a friend that's a doctor, an emergency room doctor in Nashville, and early on, he said, "I can guarantee that you will never touch your face once I give you this little hint." He said, "Just imagine everything you touch, whether you pick up a pen or your phone, just imagine it is covered in excrement."
That's great.
Another happy note we're ending on.
All right, it's a good thought.
I always think about that when I handle currency.
Do you?
When you think of where money's been.
You make yourself not, you think about, whoa, I'm not touching my face.
Yeah, and carry little hand sanitizer...